All right, welcome everyone. It's six o'clock. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you guys for joining us for our workshop. And I will let Mr. Weigle take it from there.
Yeah, so I think first we're gonna have the math curriculum review from the math committee, so that'll be Shane and I think Leslie. Who's gonna present or which order you wanna go in, just because of the overview of that process?
Okay. Hi.
How are you?
Hello. And for those who don't know, I'm Leslie Haron. And I have this attached in the session or in the agenda as well, but kind of the spiel of the process that we went through this year is at the bottom. So it says, "The district math team started meeting in January to discuss curriculum wants and needs." The team outlined what curriculums and supplemental materials were currently being used and whether those materials were best for our districts and student needs. The team then researched high-performing districts in Wyoming and what curriculums those districts were using. The team then cross-referenced those curriculums through different educational resources, review resources, to see if the curriculums were highly rated. Then teachers across the district spent time this spring semester piloting those curriculums and doing ample research on those curriculums. At the final meeting of the year on May 3rd, the team came to the following consensus as a district. Our vision is to align K-12 by utilizing the new and updated version of Envision. Through Envision, we can have complete vertical K-12 alignment in mathematics, which will allow us to share and analyze data across all grades. Above are the quotes for the curriculum and supplemental materials the district would like for mathematics starting the school year 24, 25. And so the breakdown for Envision, that would be a six-year quote, K-12. And that is linked in there as well, but that would be for $155,827. And then all that follows under that is supplemental. Freckle Math is for K-2, that is $10,805. There's two different quotes for IXL depending on what we wanna go with. There's a three-year quote and a five-year quote, and it's broken down a little further on the right as to not all of that is for math specifically. Grades 3, 5 would be math and ELA. 5 would be math, ELA, and science. Grade 6, 8 would be math, ELA, and science, and then grades 9, 12 would be just math on those quotes. We're also trying to, at the middle school, it's been a really tough transition for middle schoolers to come up. They haven't seen any of the technology that we use up here. And so being able to have that same technology calculator-wise at the middle school for those kids that are taking Algebra I there is, I think, pretty important. So that is why we're asking for those TI84 plus CE calculators to help with. There's one that would go to the high school and then the rest would go down to the middle school to get them to see that stuff then first before they come here where it's not just a shock when they get up to the high school. There are also really short-end calculators altogether at the middle school, so that's the TI30X calculators as well. Edulastic is a program that we've been using for quite a few years. It has all our common assessments for math in it right now, even though we would be getting a new curriculum hopefully through Envision. I don't think that we should get rid of Edulastic right now as we have built all of our common assessments in there. In the future, we think that we don't need that program anymore, then we could probably do away with it. It's a pretty minimal cost per teacher, but just wanted to put that in there. And then Delta Math is also a supplemental resource. So depending on which direction we go for IXL, we're asking for between 53, 3, 38, and 75, 263. So the total funds we're requesting for math over the next six years would be 209, 165, or 231, 090. You guys have any questions?
Where does the money come from? Out of the general?
So we're actually gonna use some of our external art funds.
Always have an expert.
For a little while, till about September.
That's good.
So, if I'm correct, Jenny, that's where we're gonna take that. We're gonna have some curriculum budgeted, but not close to that number. And the last time, I believe, it was booked at the high school, went to Chromebooks, but not a curriculum or textbook or anything that follows, so I think it's really good for parents, some of their instructions.
Yeah, five years ago when we, math was up for review, we, I think, had, Tom, do you remember? Was it like forty thousand K-12?
What are you talking about?
Last year math came up, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Forty thousand is not something that you can spend K-12 on a curriculum. It's not possible. I mean, you can see that from what it is now. So yeah, last, five years ago, the 612 decided to buy Chromebooks. And then COVID happened, and then we went one-to-one, and all those Chromebooks were given out to students. So in essence, all the money we spent was given away to students, which is fine. So yeah, we really haven't been funded for a long time. So, it's a good deal.
So this Envision program, you have some good reports about it. Have you used it before, or is this gonna be new?
It is gonna be, like I said, the high school has not had a curriculum since I've been here. I taught for eight years and we haven't had a curriculum. Everything we've done has been whatever we can find. So, but K-5 has been using Envision.
Oh, okay.
Performing well on Envision overall. The nice thing about it is the gaps in the research that K-5 did, the gaps that they'd seen over the years since using it, they are now noticing that this updated version has filled those gaps for the most part. It's rearranged things the way they've been doing it for years, but now we saw that as well, and they made those adjustments. Like I said, at 612, we've been without curriculum for, well, since I've been here for eight years. And so this is just gonna be an ample opportunity for us to strive. But yes, it, there's multiple districts in Wyoming that are high-performing that use Envision. And all of the ratings that we came up with across educational sites are all very highly rated. Very highly rated.
Sounds great.
What was the common denominator between the high-performing districts? If it wasn't a core curriculum, was there a common denominator?
I don't know.
Shane kinda talked about this a little.
Go ahead, Shane.
Well, it's the professional learning communities at those districts or K through 12. And so there's a handful of them that you can see that are from grade 3 through 10 are consistently in the top five in the state in what they do. They're all PLC model schools in there, or districts.
So I think the first step to have a curriculum that meets the standards, right, that are connected, and that's what the research does in terms of head reports. And then the process is kind of the next step. So it's gonna be awesome to have a core curriculum that meets kind of that level of the standards we're asking kids to know and be able to do. And the PLC stuff is really gonna tie it together. It's pretty exciting, for sure.
Be able to show them. Yeah, being able to see it all the way, all the way through is gonna be amazing, I think.
Good.
I can tell you're looking forward to it.
I am, I'm really excited. I don't know what I'm gonna do with all the time of not having to find all the things, but you know. Learn a lot.
And I appreciate you introducing yourself too. I think that's just a good thing.
You guys have any other questions?
Anything else from Shane? Cause Shane was kinda helping with this. He was kind of the administrator, right Shane?
Yes.
Leslie did a lot of lead work, but Shane was.
Leslie did a great job, but did a great job working with their staff and getting, and also vendors too, so. And everybody else on the committee, we had representation K-12 in there. A lot of great ideas, a lot of divergent thoughts too, and we had a lot of talk and before we send then on the program K-12.
Yeah, there was a ton of work put into this, not just by me, by all the teachers and Shane and all the administrators, believe me. We worked hard to try to find what can be best for us.
Yeah, well, thank you for all that.
Thanks, Paulson. Thank you. Good job.
And congratulations on your recent graduation.
Oh, thank you.
All right, next with the science curriculum review.
Yep, Cindy Anderson is here.
Hey, guys. Cindy Anderson. Science at high school now, but I was elementary for a pile of years, right? So I was in high school for three years, but I stay in that, that role of science curriculum. So we were told, just so you know, I don't have, I don't have all the details that my math person has. I'm more of a whole par, and she's literally more detailed. So if you have questions, we'll get there, but as we've gone through in our science department, what we, first off, what we were told is that we had approximately $17,000 for our curriculum. Which is okay, I mean, you can see here it's substantially less than in the math curriculum. But what we have, what I found after talking with each, I went and set up a meeting with, at Libby, with the science representative from each grade level at West, with the science representative from each grade level, with the science teachers from the middle school, and with, of course, my team there at the high school. What we, what I'd heard and what I put down, and I think Josh had already shared that document, or if not, I can share it with you. Libby believes that they are good to go with science right now. They feel like they are hitting it through their literacy curriculum. They don't feel like they need further professional development on that or any other materials on that. We all know that district-wide K-12, we are heavy on equipment as far as beakers and test tubes and just physical equipment. Now, the replenishable equipment that we have to do, the consumables, we always need that. West likes their FOS curriculum. They still like that. I have tried to get in contact and just kept missing the FOS representative. West told me last week that only one of the teachers is able to, to access their online curriculum, their digital curriculum, which would include all of their assessments that are in there. They had it and now they don't. So they are interested in having that, in having that access. And so I don't know, I don't have numbers for you on that tonight. What I can tell you is that they have said if there's an updated version of FOS, they still appreciate that inquiry-based learning, where you explore something and then you title learning and vocabulary to what the kids have explored. Kind of that prior knowledge for FOS. Sixth grade Mrs. Hawkins and Mrs. Fregas have, have said that they feel like they have their curriculum, they have developed their own curriculum, and they feel like it is working for them. Their test scores are showing that it is working for them as well. And so they don't have any specific curriculum needs. At the high school, as you guys probably know, we all teach different subjects. I'm probably the newbie to that, so I'm speaking more from a pretty green, this is my third year. So I'm speaking from a more green perspective. But at the high school, they thought they were, as far as curriculum, they thought that they'd set their curriculum, aligned it with the standards, and they have that pretty well set. That being said, that doesn't mean that we aren't going to request money. As you know, that we have been, there's two things. We put off last year because we didn't have the data, so we put off adopting last year. And I don't know if we're still in a five-year rotation. That's still a, maybe something.
The review cycles, sorry.
So the review cycles. Six years, okay, so we would request that since we put it off for a year, that we get put back in our original place. So we have some time to look through this and we don't have to be competing with math also at that same time. So we would like to request that, that we be put back into our original cycle for that. Since we put off last year, knowing last year was kind of a, we knew money was gonna be a crunch. We knew turnover was gonna be a crunch. And so we, and, and we just didn't quite have the data from all of our, me as well, because being new to it was. We just didn't have the data to support or refute what we had. And so that would be our first request. Our second request might be a little atypical, but knowing that the budget was, we were told seventeen thousand, what teachers would like to do with that. Again, Libby didn't think that they needed much, but they, so they said they were good with what they had. West would like their FOS, when I get those numbers for their digital, their digital access. And then they said their classes are a little bit bigger, so they need a couple new textbooks, so that's not a big deal. The high school and the middle school, what we would like to do is request that that be put in, set aside an account for teachers pay teachers lessons to accommodate us. I know that my curriculum, because I came in, and I don't, I didn't have the credentials to teach, to teach the college anatomy and physiology. When I came in, I found a curriculum online, it was out of Nichols, and I have used, that we bought a full curriculum that was aligned to standards on that. And so we would like to be able to access the funding for that. And then also at the end of the year, we have a lot of supplies that come in at the end of the year that we, we know that our financial, like our finances have to be cut off, but I know my Mr. Wallace is building rockets, so we would just like to have maybe a savings, just like a, an account set aside just for us, for the science department that they can, that we can access to download an activity. Libby said maybe they would use that, and so we could talk to them about specifics as far as how much money each gets, knowing how much different buildings teach science. So Libby thought that they had it covered, but they would also like access to maybe get a supplement activity, supplemental activity for their, for their literacy unit and stuff. So that is what we would like to request, is that that $17,000 beyond the FOS that West needs be put into an account that we can utilize for curricular needs. Since we have our common, and then also that we would be put back into our original place in the, in the rotations and the curriculum. Questions? Concerns? I, I mean, I don't know if it's doable. I don't know. Who would answer that? Jamie? Mrs. Johnson?
I mean, is that possible to have that? I think when you start to talk about like everybody rolling over, then I feel like if science does it, then is math gonna wanna do it? Then it's constantly tracking, okay, this is how much of the quote-unquote reserve is built for Libby. This is how much is built for West. So I think it would almost kind of become a tracking nightmare. I'm not saying it's impossible.
But my, my problem is, we can spend $17,000 and we can spend it, I can spend it this week, but I don't wanna spend money just to spend money.
Right.
Right? And so if math has high needs this year and they wanna see this curriculum, I, I think they should be able to, but I don't wanna have to spend just to say I've spent it.
So a question, so if you have it for the full year, could we need more time to investigate? How are you going to spend it? So it has to be short-term? Could we put something in your account, like as a building level? Kind of like you do with your building funds, which you put aside, it could be through a high school, through Glendal, through the middle school? We just separate that out a little bit? Then you'd have access to it, then as you go through the year, if you find something you really like, or if there's an area that you're, you need some more activities with, then it would be a, we'd have a full year?
Right, I think we were thinking that we would like to be able to have access to that for the remainder, the four years, the orders that we have left on our cycle. Like have access to that money at that point. I know, I don't know, so let me take that back. I suspect there are going to be some retirements within the next year and to, to have to spend it then and have nothing for anybody else who might be coming in, I think would be just, I, I don't know, I don't think that seems, because we don't have an adopted curriculum. We, we can't, we, we have not agreed, we had agreed just at a K-5 level, and then Libby has adopted a new literacy curriculum, which is so strong and, and time-consuming for real. So that's, we're a little discombobulated, and I don't, I don't know if a year we've, it's not that we don't know how to spend money. We do. We can, but we just don't wanna spend it or adopt a curriculum just to adopt a curriculum, and you can't adopt a science curriculum for $17,000 in K-12. You sure, you cannot, no. I don't think we could adopt it, I don't think you could adopt it K-5
Right.
For $17,000, right? I believe our last one was $43,000 for.
Sure.
Do I speak to that, or do I have speaker rights?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're in session. Introduce yourself.
If you talk to teachers.
Charles Frankie.
Charles Frankie, sorry. Any building, any building. They spend so much of their own money on Teachers Pay Teachers that they have a library of really good stuff. And so do I, and they spend their own money most of the time because they want that good stuff. And Teachers Pay Teachers has something called EESL. I don't know if you've heard of it, but we could share all that stuff and make it, you know, shared with all teachers. If we have, if we could do that. I don't think it would be that big of a nightmare to, to do that, just because it's always been a little bit frowned upon when you said Teachers Pay Teachers, and they'd be like, well, we don't know what that is, but there's really excellent stuff in there, all tied to standards. And I have a library that you would not believe of stuff from math and science and social studies, all of them. And if we had it all on an EESL and we could go in there and pick it out instead of, by the same, same thing she does, or we have five of the same lessons here, it might be, I will look into that EESL and see if that would help. Because you would not believe the amount of stuff that's actually out there.
And Teachers Pay Teachers does have like a school account, where you can go through your school account and you can get so much.
And you could stop.
You can get, you could say, okay, you have this much money. I would tell you, in just probably six years ago, when we were looking at science curriculums, I would be the person that's like, Teachers Pay Teachers, no, that's just a bunch of activities. And yet, when I researched, cause Josh was kind enough in the last couple of years to let me like buy a unit from this person, and buy a unit from this person, and so I've checked out some of the Biology I units, the AP Biology units. I checked out some of the Anatomy and Physiology units, and he's let me just buy a unit here and there. And so I've been able to see how well they really are put together, and they're really pretty all-encompassing as far as that.
So when you buy a unit, you
Yes, you do.
You give money to that teacher, and that teacher has that money to buy something else?
You, so teachers, this is teacher-made curriculum, is what Teachers Pay Teachers. They, they build a curriculum. There's, there's one, I haven't bought any of his yet, but I found it on Facebook. And so they're building their own curriculum based on, the latest ones are on the 5A Plan for Science, and they are all based on standards, a lot of them geared towards Texas, of course, but toward our textbooks.
So it comes out of your budget?
No, we pay for the
It's your money, on your pocket.
If I have money, Josh will let me, Josh will let me take it out of my budget.
Oh, good.
But there's a lot of times, like today, I, I needed just a couple of quick reviews and I went on there. So then I'm buying just the separate worksheet, right, so I just, I split.
Yeah, I probably have to, what I'm saying is if you just have it on a whole R.
You have to do it for math and science and social things?
Well, he has a math curriculum though, so you have a math curriculum coming that you're gonna be right.
So, but it's an individual one though, so it doesn't go to a school somewhere else. It's an individual teacher that does it on the side, but makes things and often. The only concern that I've read recently is some AI things are being generated through Teachers Pay Teachers. And they put it together real quick and then they sell it.
And then they sell it.
So if we look a little more into AI, there could be some things we could actually have access to through that, paying someone else to do the AI search and development. That's just a little questionnaire.
Right.
So I think when it first came, they were skeptical, and then a lot of the curriculum people didn't like it because it wasn't research-based, but there's some really good supplemental things out there. But now with the AI, the AI, you gotta really be careful about spending money towards something that was developed by putting in a couple of statements and pushing click, and then I'll say, here's your unit, unit of whatever.
Absolutely, I would totally agree with you. You need to be really cognizant of the authors of the material that you have followed, that you have, have downloaded from.
Yep.
I can tell you, my chemistry teacher feels like she has a solid curriculum. She also is teaching through the college level, right? Physics, she has a solid curriculum. Our botany and zoology, they all feel like their curriculums are solid, but sometimes you just need a little supplement. Maybe a question has come up with kids and you want to talk with them, you know? And so you want just a supplement in that, and I think that's what Libby was looking for, is maybe just something a little extra. But they really didn't feel like they needed anything. The other thing that 3 through 12 would like is some professional development and on writing assessments or an assessment program. And I think Leslie spoke to that when she talked about edulastic. That does have a good assessment piece with edulastic, and so I do use that and test my kids. And doing that, they have a pretty good bank for most questions. The middle school really likes the Wyoming assessments. The Department of Ed, their website has like an assessment maker that they have questions. They have questions off of past white, off their standards base, so they like those. But we would, we would like to see, that would be the other thing, is just some assessment pieces. And, and I would tell you honestly, Teachers Pay Teachers isn't the best for that because kids could go in there, buy that same curriculum, if they know and they can get those answers, so.
I think we can work on that, we can work on the budget part, I can brainstorm maybe a couple of ideas.
How to figure that out?
We don't have the budget for the one year, maybe it's a little more long-term, depend on some check, just we can look at that.
That would be great. So that, that would be our only two, our, our two questions is if we could set it aside to be used that well, and then, and then get back in our regular places.
So, what, just catch me up because, you know, just I'm new to this. So what did you say, the Teachers Pay Teacher, but you called it something where you're
It's an EESL.
The EESL?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't explored that as much. I thought that was more of
I'm not sure what it is.
I, I honestly thought EESL was, was just more of a, like a Google base for distant learning. So I haven't looked into it as much.
The assignments that, or the, the curriculum I bought or any of the activities I bought on EESL.
Your budget, if we bought what, we'd have to stick to the budget, but it would be everyone's.
And everybody could use it? Now, so can you like upload and contribute? I'm trying to understand what this.
No, no, so you're just, you're buying a product. If you went to Teachers Pay Teachers, you could search for units, and you are just buying a product that another educator has developed.
But you're an educator, can't you put one?
I, I could. I could absolutely do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, if I was smart, I would do that and I would make a lot of money, but I'm not that smart. So I would. That's what, that's what I was trying to understand is.
Typically, the licenses are for one teacher. I don't know if they would, I mean, our, our, our numbers are small enough that it probably, they wouldn't, they would frown on, they might frown on, they might not even notice if Glendal was also using them. I can't, I can't tell you that.
So you're just paying up for access?
You, no, you pay for the, the product.
Oh.
Oh, you download it, it's yours.
Okay. Okay, Teachers Pay Teacher.
Click on, yeah, TTT.
Yeah, so it's like a supplemental curriculum.
I bought a full anatomy and physiology curriculum, because when I came here, I had no curriculum. I did have our, I did have what we needed to teach our standards, but I did not have a curriculum because before it had been taught through WC.
Okay.
Yeah, so what, what we're really talking about, when we, when we're talking about curriculum tonight, we're talking about the resources that teachers have. We have our curriculum, what we are gonna teach to kids.
We have our math.
Our math, what we have, our maths that we've built. So when we talk about curriculum, we're talking about the resources that we need to use to deliver that.
Okay.
And so math and science, the last time they went through, both content areas chose, at the secondary level, chose to buy classroom sets of Chromebooks. So that's why we're So that's why we're in, in this part now, and we just, fortunately we've had the literacy grant come through. We have the remaining dollars from ESAR coming through, where we can align K twelve for math.
Okay.
And trying to figure out what we can do with science.
Thanks, I just kinda wanted to piece this together.
It's not like.
Yeah.
When Cindy says she doesn't have a curriculum, it's just, it's those resources that have been built.
It's there.
The last time we went through the process with science, those teachers felt that they just wanted the technology. They were gonna, they were gonna teach everything on our curriculum maps, they were gonna build it, do what they needed to do with the resources, online, digital resources that they had. But, you know, when math did that too, one of the things that we heard is that we wanted, parents still wanted access to a textbook or, you know, to have that ability. But we also have online resources too. So that's what we're talking about, we're just talking about the resources.
Yeah.
The curriculum, the things that we're teaching, those are solid, those are, each content group has that in place, we're just talking about the resources.
Also, just, just to keep in context, and I think, and you can correct me on numbers, Josh, cause I'm just trying to remember them off the top of my head. Just so you know, as far as, like, is what we have working, what are we doing working? When we looked at YTOP, um, the past two years, and, and I, I blame me, I'm the great one in the whole department, right? So, whatever, um, the past two years, I think we were sitting in science, we were at forty three percent proficient. And then this last year, um, we were at sixty one percent proficient. And so, we can see that upward as Sally and I can connect a little better, we rearranged courses a little bit to fit. Um, so the kids have access to all of that, so I think we are, we're making some gains, but yes, we are still using the curriculum maps. Um, I do, Biology Two was ten ten and then Anatomy and Physiology was also a college year. So they followed that curriculum and their materials, which I, I don't have the credentials to teach, so.
All right. I've got a couple of things to work on for that, find out what piece we'll get back to you.
Perfect.
We can figure that out, but you know.
If not, tell us and we will spend your seventy thousand dollars.
I'm just like.
We have that.
Sounds good, sounds good.
I, I got some things in mind, I can do that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got about six thousand of it spent already.
Do you?
All right, Cedric, are you ready?
Yeah, let me show you.
I'm ready.
So we worked with our new schools PL, PLP, that was introduced to me through Northeast Wyoming BOSI's, they run it. They have a contract they run, so you get a really good price for it, they said they would give us some access during summer school, so it wouldn't cost anything, but we would just try it. We know that ingenuity kinda is frustrating at times, a little clunky how it works. Um, some of the students aren't really engaged with, uh, ingenuity. So we're just looking at maybe a different option, since we've talked about it a few times, we thought it'd be nice just to see it. And see maybe what students might be able to see, and I'll let Cedric kind of take it on from there.
I searched. Okay, so, uh, what I have right here is like a, a course, course book, um, with the, the courses. This, this isn't everything they have, this is like sixty pages long, so I just wanted to show you a couple of them. If you notice right here, this is credit recovery. So, you know, when you think Peak High School, you're thinking, not, not every student, but you're thinking, most students are there because they didn't pass. At, in the Wheatland High School class, or multiple Wheatland High School classes. So, they're trying to go back to a course they've previously taken and complete it, so they can keep moving on. Um, so that's what, that's what credit recovery would be. Um, so like, credit recovery, biology, chemistry, earth science, environmental science. Now, with that being said, edgenuity offers, you know, all those things also. I think one of the major differences between the two, um, is like the level. Uh, let me show you this really quick, so I am not just talking. Um, I don't know if you can see it very well, but it, it talks about, um, synchronous and asynchronous. So synchronous means a teacher could be teaching this and everybody is following along, going the same speed and stuff like that. So asynchronous is more, I'm going my speed, Josh is going his speed. We're all maybe in the same course, but we're working on our own, basically our own path. So each unit begins with a pre-test, so I might not test very well and Josh could test really well. And he could supposedly in the program, he could skip to the skills that he is missing. And he could be farther ahead than me, that's where that individual thing comes in, where I might need. Maybe stuff at the beginning more than, more than what he does, so he could jump to the middle of the course, where I might be starting from square one, even though I've taken it before. Um, so that's, that's a positive thing. We, we have a lot of students, that, that's what they're doing, they've, they've taken this course before, so they're redoing it. If they can prove to us that, hey, I know these things, I should start here, because this is where my knowledge kinda dropped off. I think that's a good thing for the kids.
Definitely.
And this, this is basically kind of another thing that talks about, you know, the pre-test, um, gives you real-time data and student mastery. And then this one right here, um, sometimes we get students, um, that might be, might be on an IEP or something like that, in Peak High School. And we can, this accommodated, we, there's accommodated courses in there, they have shortened assessments, um, they get more attempts. There's a mastery threshold that might be a little bit lower, they, their assessments are not timed. So a lot of things you might see in a five oh four or an IEP could be within this. Now, could you adjust a regular course to that? You could. Um, but this is kind of, uh, their version of showing the accommodated stuff. So I'll take you into. A lesson here and I'll just click on stuff and see if I can break it, I don't know. Maybe? So like, start of the lesson gives you vocabulary, here's what you need to know before you start this. I don't know if the sound's gonna work, but.
Imaginary number.
Okay, so it tells you the name and then you can read it. So then you can go down to the next one, so if a kid feels like they know all these or they, it's, it's a good place for them to start. These are the things I need to know. So then when they go down here, um. Edgenuity, it would be more like, and I have, oh, Miss Sis, I don't know where she went, Miss Sis was in here, um. When, when kids do edgenuity, that basically, they open the lesson up and it's like a ten or fifteen minute video that they watch and it teaches them. But if they are not taking good notes, or they're not understanding it, they don't, they can't go back, I mean, you can go back in the video. But if I'm telling you the same thing over and over and over, and you're not getting it, it's not gonna help you get it. So, um, this, they can read these, um, supposedly, as they, um, I'll just play this. I don't know how much about math that is actually doing, but it's kinda maybe trying to motivate them. So as they come down here, these are questions they're, they're trying to figure out, so. I don't know the correct answer to these, so I'm just clicking on them.
He phoned a friend, Leslie's in the rack.
Leslie.
Just clicking that one.
Okay, Harlan, you up here on this one?
Just clicking any old picture, picture right off.
So, they basically, this is just the math one, they can read, um. What I've heard from a couple of students that have taken, we actually got a pilot with a few kids this spring semester. So it's been kinda cool, um, for them to get their hands on it and see what they thought. We had a student finish some biology, I'll let Ms. Amundson kinda chat about that.
So I had a student in my, my class and, and he's, I think he's also in Peak, but anyway, he was taking Bio One, sophomore, you have to take Bio One. He failed first semester and he was failing second semester and it wasn't because he isn't a capable student, but he just wouldn't. Like, wouldn't, head down, just wouldn't, I don't, I don't know what else, what else to say about him, but he just wouldn't. And so I, I approached my administrators and I said, can I try, cause Cedric had had me in, cause I teach summer school and. But he had me in on the preview of this and I said, can we just try it? Like, it's supposed to be more engaging, let's just try it. So I pulled the student in and I said, hey, I need you to pilot this program with me. Like, I need to see what you like, what you don't like, let's work through it. He, it wasn't fast, but within, like from the, we started this, when did we start with him, like? February?
Yeah.
In February, he has got his first credit recover from first semester Bio One. And it's only because he can see progress in this, that he couldn't necessarily see when, cause I taught edgenuity with summer school. And it's fine, I mean, it's an online program, edgenuity is, it's fine, it's paid for, but this one, these videos, I don't know if you noticed, this one was eighteen seconds long. Like, it's enough to get him there, but you can also have the transcript if kids wanna read it, and so they can read it. And then there's a quiz at each little section. I would tell you, the edgenuity videos are just a little antiquated and the kids, they're literally zoned out, they're not paying attention, they're going for bathroom breaks. They're letting them play through and maybe you're better than I am at summer school at getting them to just like focus. Yes, no?
I, I'll just let you ta, I don't wanna interrupt.
Wait, I, I don't, this is a work session, we can, we're just having, we're having conversation. But anyway, this student and he said, and he would tell me and he liked that he could take that pre-test on each section, each unit, there's five units in the credit recovery. And he could see that first unit, he got out of like four of the lessons. So out of the nine, he had to do five, and for him, that was like.
Yeah.
Check, right, I can see that I've already made progress. Um, it does a nice job of keeping track of, it's just more visually attractive to him as he's watching it and looking at it and he's showing me things about it. It does have a piece where you can take notes if you want, he hasn't used that, cause he says he's smarter than that, he doesn't need to, he's not an idiot, so he doesn't need to take notes. Oh, that's fine, don't take notes. We've got him halfway through now, he's not quite as motivated this end of the year, I, I don't know that we're gonna get him through his second credit in Biology. But he can see a little glimmer of hope and if we can show like this kiddo online, a little glimmer of hope. We can show those kids a glimmer of hope, so I do have another student who decided to do the same thing. This student has been diagnosed with some anxiety issues and, and has medically been diagnosed. And so, any group work, being in a group, being in that class setting is hard, first hour, hard. So she's almost done with hers too, and we just started her about four weeks ago, so she's about halfway through. I'm taking hers too, it's just a good place for her and it follows along pretty well with what I teach, so.
So I think I know this student that you're speaking of. That student, um, doesn't engage in school very much at all, but he'll bring in books that are this thick. And he loves, when he does read, is it true to say he loves to read? So this school's PLP, what I really appreciate about it is that it's not edgenuity for summer school. Because I really think it's important that we have a different program for summer school than what's at Peak High School. Um, just to do something different. It, it isn't as successful in my opinion with kids that are in special ed or have five oh fours, cause it is text heavy. There certainly is some graphic things that are engaging, but a lot of it is like, what, what I, when I had kids doing it. Was kind of a fancy fill-in-the-blank worksheet kind of thing. So the, the reading kids, in my opinion, will do very well. The good thing that edgenuity does is it actually has a teacher teaching the lesson, so the kids that need to hear the lesson and can go back and re-hear it. Especially for math, the lower level kids with the guided notes and then they can hear it again, are more successful, in my opinion, than school's PLP. I've talked many times with the gentleman who's our like, marketing person, whatever. And he was excited that the math portion is gonna be updated and what he said it was gonna be like was IXLs. And so again, for the, the special ed students, they sometimes end up at Peak High School because they aren't successful with the computer-generated answers on IXLs. They need to hear it and see it and write it. And edgenuity is not perfect, but in this last three or four months, they have added a lot of more, um, engaging curriculum. It's more diverse of teachers, multicultural, they've added more, um, where the kids have to interact with it, rather than just watching the video. And that's what the edgenuity person has told me, is they're gonna continue to add more into that. So I think school's PLP may be really good for summer school, but I wouldn't necessarily think it'd be a, be all end-all for Peak High School. Cause edgenuity, even though it gets a bad rap for having to watch the videos, it's good for the kids that struggle and need to have things repeated for them to listen to again. That's just my two cents.
I think one of the big things here is it, it gives us an opportunity to see a different program, to see, see if it is gonna fit. Um, you know, we have edgenuity under purchase for another school year. Um, so this gives us an opportunity to take a look at another program, you know, since BOSI's is paying for it, we kinda like that. You know, take this opportunity that we've been given to take a look at it and really, you know, really dig into it, you know, we've had a few students here and there. Try out some classes, um, we're gonna use it, you know, I think we're gonna offer Spanish one and French one through this, through school's PLP. Uh, for kids that are, especially juniors that are looking, they're now looking at schools that maybe require foreign language and they're, they're kinda worried about how they're gonna get that requirement done. So, we're gonna, we're gonna test it out, we're gonna try it, we're gonna put it through spaces during summer school. And, you know, see how it really does stack up against edgenuity, if edgenuity keeps adding to their, their, um, program, that's fine. Um, I think the other thing that we need to think about is currently we have an unlimited, unlimited access to edgenuity. And so one of the things that we need to think about is, instead of paying for that unlimited resource, we're backing down to a number of licenses. So that's really what we're trying to figure out here is, through summer school, does it, does it meet the needs, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's a flop, I don't know. But we're gonna try it and see, see how, see how it goes.
And since the beginning, the gentleman has said that they're doing all kinds of new stuff for the summer. So it may change a lot between right now and, to and according to the guy that's selling the program. Isn't that true, Mr. Fainhill? Is it, he's gonna have to bring it all, like there's gonna be more changes come summer, so.
I think there's probably access to things that we don't have, just piloting some stuff.
Just getting. Mm-hmm.
That we will get once it's a paid option, so.
Are there any questions on that? If I'm teaching three different grade levels, I can see how this would really help me. Cause it would have a sixth grade curriculum, right, sixth grade stuff and seventh and eighth, everything, right, language arts, math.
Yeah.
So, I would use it in regular classroom, I, I mean, it would help Glenda that way.
Cedric, what's the age rate, what's the grade, is it K twelve?
It's K twelve, so here's, here's an example of like middle school. Fourth grade. Year, K one, two, three.
So is this something that the district is looking at, K twelve?
So is this something that the district is looking at, K twelve? Or is this something that they are wanting just for Peak High School and it's summer school?
I think right now it's built for summer schools to say, let's try it for summer school, but it could meet the needs of other areas too.
I think Charles will end up with one or the other. Just with three different grade levels.
Kids don't, honestly, kids aren't crazy about edgenuity, I'm just saying that.
That's what my school is.
I don't know if I should say all kids, they're not crazy about it.
And it may be helpful, I have not worked with a lot of like our IEP kiddos, but my summer school kiddos. Now, they're also in summer school, so we know that they're harder to engage, but I would tell you that.
You've got other programs out there, like in social studies, you've got an entire textbook, I don't think anybody uses it. It's called Savas. I like it, but I don't think anybody uses it. And that's a savings you could get if you just.
High schools use it.
Yeah, I love Savas, it's got. But there's things out there, it's called Savas, Savas, A-S-A-V.
It's where our, it's where our social studies texts, online textbooks that are.
It's an excellent program and I don't think any people even know we have that.
We actually use Writeable. Every kid gets their own book every year that they write all over throughout the year and it's just a replacement purchase that we do every year for third, fourth, fifth year.
You have a lot of videos, a lot of texts for both. Most times.
Are we able to move on to the budget? You guys get a little bit?
Yeah, thanks guys.
Stay calm.
I'm not more than a lot, so that's good.
All right, Jamie.
Thank you.
Charles, can I ask you a question before you leave? We're talking about graduations and will there be an eighth grade graduation? Or just add, add an award symbol?
Yeah, there'll be an award.
Will you let us know when?
Yeah, just, you bet.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm afraid my son's running out.
It's been six minutes.
Two minutes. I don't have this memorized, it's sorry.
I don't know why not.
I know, I know, people have numbers all day and I'm like, I can't keep, who's, who are we talking about?
It wasn't working, I popped it up, but now it's not working again.
Okay. So prelim. This is gonna be harder than I thought.
Do you, do you, do you?
Can I, can I do something?
You can have, you can run it.
Can I just unplug this?
Uh.
Do you have nothing?
I don't know if there's anything.
Okay, that'll work, that'll work. Did I skip a slide when I did that? Okay, um, preliminary budget. As you all know, that this is required by state statute to, to present to the board by May fifteenth of every year preliminary budget. We follow the fiscal year of July first through June thirtieth. We have the following funds, the general fund, special revenue fund, which makes up major maintenance, federal funds grants, state restricted grants and BOSI's. We have our capital projects funds. We have our enterprise or food service fund and the agency fund, student activities. Okay, first we're gonna talk about the general fund. Revenue information, that the district is made up of three sources of revenue from local revenue, county revenue and state revenue. Um, the following information that you are going to be presented includes a reduction in the ADM. Oh, hmm. There we go. Uh, reduction in ADM, this includes steps and lanes. There are no changes to the retirement contribution, FICA, Medicare contribution. Change in the insurance costs, what we know so far. The last time I was told, we had only thirty-three percent of the staff had made their decision. So we don't know very much at this point in time regarding insurance. But we, what we do know is that it's gonna be split seventy-five, twenty-five percent for the fifteen hundred, eighty, twenty for the twenty-five hundred and the district will pay a hundred percent of the thirty-five hundred high deductible plan.
Do they have a deadline to get to you?
May twenty-fourth, it's the deadline, yep. Everybody, everybody, classified, principals, bus drivers, everybody has till May twenty-fourth to, to let us know. Yep, so there's still plenty of time for them to make decisions, ask questions.
And there's been representation from the insurance company.
Yep, the insurance agent was here last Thursday or Monday, Monday. During the teacher work day, was available by appointment to make, um, to answer some questions. And last I knew she had a couple openings, so.
And we did a general one for everybody on a Friday, morning afternoon, a good one, I think it was pretty well attended, people. Yep, for sixty people, I think were there.
Yep. Yep, um, this does include a lunch fund transfer, we have that every year. Some of the increases you're gonna see is the eight thousand eighty base increase for all staff. That's everybody, classified, administrators, teachers, everybody. The increase in the cost of the health insurance, now that's just for the increase of the cost, that's not people moving and switching plans, we don't know that yet. Uh, we had to add summer school back in for June of twenty twenty-five. Summer school is being funded right now out of CARES. So we took all those out of the general fund budget, so now we're adding those back in. So that's gonna be an increase. We have some new teaching positions, a fourth grade teaching position, sped at Wheatland Middle School and some new coaching positions that we're looking at for the year. Some of the decreases that you'll see is property insurance costs, that's gonna be decreased and just efficiency with some of the staff openings that we've had throughout the year of not filling some of those. Oh, sorry, uh, what does the general fund provide? Instructional support and services, salaries, benefits, supplies. Most of that comes out of the general fund. Transportation and sped costs also come out of the general fund. However, you have to pay for it upfront and then get reimbursed the following year. Utilities, electric bills, water bills, gas, sewer, all that is out of the general fund. Property insurance and activities, student activities, all coaching contracts, all officials to officiate games, travel, all of that. Okay, so for fiscal year twenty-five, this is what we are looking at. First, we'll start with the twenty twenty-four draft budget.
Can you, can you do a control plus just to blow up a little bit during your screen?
Negative goes right here.
Top right, give it, it showed the.
That plus up there, top corner.
I'm hitting it and it's not increasing.
That's negative.
Can you move the arrow a little bit? Click with a touchpad.
We got the five there, so they can see what page we're on.
So you're at two hundred percent.
Maybe click on the finger and then try it?
No, it's just gonna move me slides if I do it that way. Um, I'll read most of them.
Is that a screenshot?
Is it a screenshot?
That, that you put into the slide?
It's a picture, yeah.
So can you click on that whole thing and make it bigger?
No, it's just gonna next the slide if I click.
Oh.
But that's saying it's getting bigger, but really it's not.
You could exit out of it and just use the. Well, now you're really big. It's a big old face, Josh.
No, when I go plus it makes it smaller.
Wow.
Eight, so I have to.
Closer.
I really tried. Okay, that's about all, I'll read through the rest that I can. So, um, looking at the green column right here, I know you guys can't see my mouse. Okay, so, uh, we were projecting to have a beginning cash balance of about three point six million dollars. After our audit and what cash we had received and what had actually come out, we were looking, we were audited at four point two million dollars. So our revenues for our draft budget was five point nine in local revenue. I'm anticipating at this point in time to be closer to six point one. So we've received more in local revenue than what we anticipated. County revenue is the same scenario. We anticipated one point six million dollars in county revenue and I'm anticipating one point seven million dollars in county revenue. State revenue, we knew was gonna be kind of wonky with adding in the charter school and the funding model's not being released till later. So we were anticipating ten point nine million, we're actually going to be receiving closer to eleven point seven million dollars. So quite a significant difference between what we had originally projected and what I am still anticipating. Now, these are not final, these will not be final until June thirtieth as far as what revenues we receive. And then of course, the cash balance won't be final until our audit is finished. Other revenue, we were not anticipating, um, selling of some, the sale of the buses, some sales of some Red Cat speech machines, um, those types of things. Um, so that's what that fourteen thousand one oh eight is made up of. So the difference in between the two revenues is, like I said, pretty significant. The district will have to pay the state back for some county and low, low revenue that they will collect back just because you take your entitlement minus your local revenues and that's where you get your, your entitlement payment. And so we will have to pay some of that back, but that's already gonna be figured into this. That was probably more than what you bargained for there. As far as uses go, um, the district's doing really well. We allocated nine point two million dollars to be spent. At this point in time, I'm projecting eight point five to be spent on direct instruction. Instructional support, we allocated one point six and I'm projecting to spend one point two. Admin and support services, we allocated six point one, projecting to spend five point four. Transfers, this is gonna be to the food service fund. We anticipated three hundred thousand to be transferred to the food service fund. You can only carry over so much cash into the food service fund, so we're only gonna be looking at a two hundred eighty thousand dollar transfer to make our cash within the states. Thank you. As far, the next line is for the reserve. This is going to be a new fund that I will talk about a little bit later in the presentation. It's called a depreciation reserve. After speaking with some of the other business managers, um, a lot of other districts have a depreciation reserve. As long as I've been here, plot one has never been able to transfer into a depreciation reserve. So that's what that one point eight is going to be. Like I said, I'll discuss that a little bit further in the presentation. We anticipated a one point two million dollar pass-through for Prairie View. We're looking at one million forty-five thousand. So that's kind of where I'm projecting us to finish out the year. So therefore, what I'm projecting is we'll put five, it'll be a total of a cash balance of five point three to start out the year. The district is able to have, it's five point, five million seven fifty-seven, one thirty-nine seventy-seven is the maximum that the district can put into their cash balance. So we'll.
Not including your depreciation, huh?
No, the depreciation reserve is on top of that. So, um, right now, uh, we would be sitting at twenty-seven percent, not fifty percent.
Okay.
Okay? Local revenues, I'm anticipating to be at seven point one, county revenues at one point eight, state revenue at nine point six. You can see they're kind of increasing the local and county revenues and decreasing the state. So the more you get from your county, your local, the less the state's gonna give you as far as an entitlement. Currently, after meeting with principals and directors, we're, um, looking to have nine point eight in direct instruction, one point eight in instructional support, six point five in administrative support services. Again, transferring three hundred thousand into the food service and allocating three, one million thirty-two thousand to Prairie View. So what are the unknowns? There's a lot still, I know that everybody thinks that the year is over, kids are about ready to end, but this is where the big part starts to come. We have five payrolls still left to pay, May, May, June, July, August. And then those that work in the summer, four. But the fifth one hasn't hit, it's not May, May twentieth yet, so we need that one still. Okay, so anyways, so moving on, insurance is, we don't know who's moving insurance plans. We don't know the amount of our property insurance renewal, we will know that at the end of May. This year, we're used to renewing in January, but now we are gonna renew in May. So we will know that at the end of the month. We don't know what is gonna happen as far as May through June thirtieth spending. We do have some bigger purchases that the district is looking at, we're looking at the three MPVs. We're looking at a snow blade, some sprinkler repairs. We've purchased some interactive TV software updates that, um, will be coming to us in the next ten days. Copiers have been delivered, everybody got a brand, not everybody, most got a brand new copier. So we're looking to pay that bill before June thirtieth. We also have a lot of open positions, we have three sped teachers, a band teacher, additional classified positions, bus drivers, board approving Wheatland Middle School girls wrestling, if we are gonna do that as a sanctioned thing, uh, art teacher, athletic directors. So there's still a lot of known, of unknowns. When I go to do budgets for those vacancies, I tend to put all of the certified teachers at a masters plus eight. So, um, a lot of times it ends up being a wash, you get some that are brand new, you get some that have a little experience. So we kinda try and hit the middle of the pay scale. I also budget for everybody to come in, uh, to need a family medical plan. So not everybody will do that either. Okay? Any questions about the general fund before I move on? Okay, special revenue, this includes all the grants. Just because we have the grant doesn't mean we're gonna spend a hundred percent of the grant in the year. Grants can be carried, certain grants can be carried over a number of years or as we like to call them, they sunset at different times. So, right now, the federal grants are a lot of guessing of what do we think is going to come prior to June thirtieth? And what are we going to spend after June thirtieth? An example of this is the big HVAC project that's gonna be happening this summer. How many of those invoices are gonna hit before June thirtieth? How many are gonna hit after June thirtieth? So I budgeted that we were gonna spend about five hundred thousand in this year of our HVAC project. That's gonna be a majority of what's left to spend for twenty-four is gonna be that. Also, there's some grants that expire come June thirtieth, Perkins. So anything that is leftover in Perkins, we're, I'm projecting that they are gonna spend a hundred percent of that grant if it expires. Um, some grants like Tom's title doesn't expire until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So how much of that's gonna be spent on summer TV? How much of that, that invoice is gonna come after?
That's just the twenty-three grant. So the twenty, the twenty-three grant actually is spent down to zero last month. So now we're working, we have two hundred and forty thousand in the twenty-four grant and we'll get the twenty-five grant starting in, when is that gonna come for sure, do you remember? And we have to put it in before a certain date, like before June thirtieth it has to be in.
So as you're this person, you've worked through that all the way up to like October, November time, probably.
It seems like October thirtieth is when you get that.
Yep.
And that one's a lot more this year.
Yes, we did say increase in our title funds.
By a law, that we have to figure out.
We also increased Perkins for next year, about a thousand dollars more.
Mine was about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars more.
Jeez. So wow.
Yeah. So, right now, it's just a lot of. So right now, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of phone calls back and forth asking of, what do you think you're gonna spend? How much is this gonna cost you? So like I said, right now, it's a pretty big guessing game.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so whatever we don't spend in twenty four, we're projecting to spend in twenty five out of those grants if they're gonna expire. So um, that's kind of what that looks like for special revenue. Um, now for the special revenue, major maintenance side. Um, the state hasn't released what those amounts are gonna be. Um, we'd like to see at least two hundred fifty thousand remaining in the fund just for emergency use. We don't wanna spend it all the way down to zero. Um, the following includes the following projects. Uh, we're looking at resurfacing the parking lots at Wheatland Middle School in West. Glendo is in need of a new boiler. The Glendo ag shop needs a facelift. Um, the outside siding is um, falling apart is what I'm being told. The average yearly major maintenance cost is coming out of this. Um, the HVAC final project updates, um, you guys allocated to spend more to do the Libby Gym and Music area or something?
Just music, I think, just music.
Just music?
I'm sorry, just the gym areas.
Just the gym, just the gym. And then um, the football field resurfacing, those final payments I'm projecting will be in twenty five. So again, it's one of those splitting. We project that they're gonna need X amount through June and then the remainder will come in the next year. So major maintenance, starting with one point five million in the account. I'm projecting, oh, excuse me, sorry, one point three um, in the account. I'm projecting that the state is going to allocate one point one million and we're gonna spend with those projects that I just listed off to you about one point three million dollars on those projects. Okay. Uh, capital construction, this is state funded projects. Um, right now, the only one that we are looking at currently is the Wheatland Middle School roof. Um, I broke that one down again, fifty fifty. They're starting the project um, May. I think they're scheduled to do a walk through this coming week. Is that correct? Did I see that? Yeah, and then um, this is where we're gonna talk about the depreciation reserve. This is new. Uh, this is an account where district can buy bigger purchases and assets only. It is not an account where you can pay for salaries and benefits and small supplies. This is for some of your bigger purchases that you don't necessarily want to use your general fund for. So um, you can spend, every year, you can transfer ten percent of your revenues into this depreciation reserve. And then after that, you can use that for your bigger purchases. We wouldn't have to then budget for lawn mowers, staff vehicles, um, a computer server, those bigger type purchases. We could then take out of our general and use our general for more supply type purchases. So this is a good thing for the district. Like I said, it isn't something that the district has been able to do in the past.
When you say hasn't been able, what do you, like other schools, they were, it was available.
Mm-hmm. Financially, we weren't in the position to.
Oh, we couldn't put it in there.
Correct, correct.
Okay, faster.
Over the last couple of years, the district has chosen to get our cash reserve in a uh, better place than, cause you cannot transfer this money back into the general. Once it's out, it's out. It has to stay into this where you buy, like I said, strictly assets, bigger purchases for the district.
But that's a good thing because then it doesn't count against our thirty percent general fund
Correct.
that we can, we can ditch and hold on for.
Correct.
And that amount's at twenty seven projecting, right? So there's a little wiggle room, you don't wanna get too tight because you might lose money down the road. So transferring money in the depreciation and having a little wiggle room at the end makes the most sense.
Okay, um, also included in this is the sale of the old Chugwater School. Closing is set right now for May thirtieth. So you'll see that as well. So preliminary, at the end of the year, like I said, budgeting for half of the middle school roof to be invoiced, paid out, we would carry over to twenty five, two point four million dollars. I'm anticipating that the local or the interest on that is gonna go up significantly just due to adding in more money. So then you're gonna gain more interest with more money that you have into the account. Um, state is gonna put in another eight hundred eighty nine thousand for the second half of the roof. So um, like I said, it's gonna be good for the district to add that one point eight into that reserve just so we have essentially a nice account to code our bigger purchases out of versus our general fund, which is what we've been doing.
It's super.
Enterprise fund, this is the lunch fund. It includes a transfer from the general budget. It includes the anticipation of their district food cost increases. Um, so the state allows you to carry over three months of your, of the average expenses that you incur over the year. So our district can carry over a hun, I think I did the max, a hundred and twenty thousand at this time. And so depending on where the district lands as far as expenses goes, we may be able to increase that. It may decrease just depending on what the final year end expenses are. So you can only carry over, like I said, three months worth of expenses. So um, with that, we're anticipating a hundred thousand dollars in local revenue, two hundred thousand in federal and three hundred thousand from the district general fund. And so by doing that, the enterprise fund is extremely tight for next year um, with the anticipation of food costs increasing and the staffing raises and insurance currently being where they're at. Now, after May, we could learn some more information about what those staff choose to do with their insurance. So this could look different come July. But at this time, it's gonna be pretty tight as far as what we're anticipating for revenue and what we're anticipating for expenditures. Agency fund, this is the activity fund. These are student, staff and building funds, fundraisers, donations. And the Prairie View charter pass through comes out of the agency fund. Um, this one, I just take the three year average for everything. Um, what do we get over three year average for local revenue, donations, fundraisers, all the events? And then the state portion is the Prairie View pass through that the state provides to us to give to them. So I'm anticipating the state giving us one million thirty two thousand six forty one and then the transfer out of one million thirty two six forty one. It's a wash. They pay us, we pay them. Um, and then expense is the same thing. I take the three year average of what the clubs spend. That's my best guess. Um, overall, that's the preliminary. Um, questions, comments? Um, you can ask now, you can ask later, you can ask uh, between now and July fifteenth. Um, next steps is what does the board want to see? I know John and I would like to see the general fund a little closer to balance than what we are now. Um, so we'll continue to have meetings and kind of discuss on what we think um, can be some possible solutions um, to that. Uh, we're gonna continue to work with the auditor just to make sure that we are doing everything correctly with the depreciation reserve, just because it's the first time we've done that. Um, also, uh. Yeah.
So when you say um, getting it a little closer to balance, what are the excess?
So currently, right now, if we go back to the general fund, we are going into our, into our cash balance by.
Eight ninety eight.
It's just eight ninety eight oh oh five.
There you go. And so that, that sounds a little bit kinda like, oh, how can that be? Well, we have extra special ed, we have special ed openings, but the reality is we're not gonna fill those. So there's some of the things that we're hoping for, but then just like before the budget, we didn't fill those positions and every certified position is probably ninety thousand plus, so it doesn't take a lot. And we still think there's gonna be a huge decrease in some of our health insurance costs, right? We have quite a few folks that haven't made a decision and how that's gonna work out. Well, we projected with our insurance company, our web gave us some insight about these are some best things for the staff in this district. I think those are gonna see some big changes. But a lot of it's staff and within the staff, a lot of it's that reimbursable. Where we pay for it now and the next year we get reimbursed. So even though right now we're sending a little over, some of those are special ed needs and I don't think we're gonna fill those by parents and teachers.
Mm-hmm.
So but I think we, I could take the board with it because too, you wanna have a balanced budget.
Right.
We wanna have the reserves, we wanna have the depreciation fund, but we wanna have a little more accurate budget so we don't have such a wide range of differences from year to year.
Right, right.
So. Yeah, we talked a lot about some of the things we can do and not do. Um, but just the insurance alone is two hundred sixty five thousand, that was eight percent increase. That's off the top, right? And then we did all the, we did all the raises, we've done a lot of work, but it all settles. I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape still.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, probably. And we could still see some increase in some revenues as far as if we do get the MPVs ordered, purchased, paid for, that's also a reimbursable coming back to us as well.
Right.
Um, we might have some sped increase in the next couple of weeks as far as payments going out to some placements, something like that. Those are also gonna be revenue coming back.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Overall, it seems like pretty good, pretty good news.
All right, so we're gonna just type, take a few minutes to talk about um, our board training workshop that we held on the first after um, our special meeting. I sent out a email on the note review for everybody, so just um, so that everybody's aware. Hit a few highlights and then we'll get to our homework portion and asterisks. Um, the good things that we talked about that the board's doing good and the district, the direction the district's going and think was um, number one, culture change here. It seems like um, what we're all hearing is that it's more positive here. Um, we were all very pleased that we have Mr. Weigel on board. Um, I think that's part of it and part of our, uh, made our jobs easier for sure. Uh, the policy reviews are a really good thing that we're doing. Um, even though you probably wanna pluck your eyeballs out at some times. Um, the wage increases, they adopt the board, um, then mission vision and state statement and strategic plan, all of those came up as um, positive things. The negatives, um, we talked about uh, lack of discussion at meetings, um, disappointment and some of the social media comments that have been out there over the um, the past year on different um, things that have come up without, and that's just how social media goes. But you know, without knowing the facts, just pointing fingers on social media and I don't know how you actually address that until people grow up, I guess. Um, and the lack of communication from our small groups to the large groups. So we're working on those things. Um, another negative that the board needs to work on that was brought up was um, the group effort or committee meetings or committees and attendance and things like that. Um, and communication, board to the community, how we continue to get our stories out there and let people know what's going on, so. Um. We talked about our future board evaluations and we came up with that the board evaluations would be done twice a year. And our homework was to look at which board evaluation tool that was in our book everybody wanted to use. So. Just give me a board or a tool number, which one? Which one are we using? Did anybody look at it and show me?
I have looked at it before. Yeah, I like the, this one that we got in our, our training that we did with the W S B. So it's seven nineteen, it is the more uh, intrusive one, but I think it does involve every aspect and it's very detailed. What I like about it is it gives us the opportunity to think through those items and assess ourselves um, individually as well as as a team, so.
I think I would concur with that. So W S B A gets a lot of data from a lot of districts. I feel like it's not just, um, I think it's a great place to start. I'm gonna leave you.
So that's, I'll make sure everybody has a copy of it. Our first one will be in August. We decided we would be doing the board evaluations in August and September, uh, August and February to um, not interfere with the superintendent evaluations that we're supposed to do. Um, so we'll be offset. Coming up in June?
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, um, the only other thing is um, that was a great workshop that we had. I appreciate everybody being here. And that is, we're gonna try to do that every quarter. After a workshop, we'll just do a board training workshop. Some, it may not always be here, but um, we're gonna try to do that open discussion workshop once a quarter.
I'll let the round table.
Yeah, the round table, there you go. All right, questions, comments, concerns? All right, with that, we'll return.
Thank you, folks.